Yes.
See if my computer works right.
No.
Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Mr. Vedder?
Here.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Here. And let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we have no visitors tonight except for the TV world. So, your turn, Mr. Hoffman.
Exciting. Short and sweet, as usual. Technology is going pretty well. We're getting prepped for the state testing that's coming up. And right now, I believe everything, knock on wood, is going smoothly. Network-wise, seems to be going a lot better since we got our modifications done. And we're looking forward to the changes we're going to put in place over the summer. And Mr. Schaefer said, next time he's here, he will give you an update on that. But right now, we have no new information, unfortunately, so.
Perfect. All right.
Any questions?
No.
Not much.
Sure.
Yes. I'm a fan of all things short. See you in the mirror every day. All right.
Okay.
Principal reports.
That's March been set.
Benchmark has been set. Okay. Angie says she didn't have any good history.
We successfully completed our kindergarten registration on March 7th and 8th. It looks like we're going to have a pretty large incoming class for kindergarten. We had 75 students come through. So with the 11 students from readiness, that gives us a class of 86 total kiddos so far. And we typically have at least 10 that come in in August.
And then you'll pull a class of readiness out of that?
We will. So right now, tentatively, I have 12 in readiness with 74 kindergarten students making our classes about 18 and 19 students for our kindergarten class, which is big. Second and fourth grade music concert this week. Second grade is 5:30 and fourth grade is at 7 o'clock. This is Thursday, March 22nd. We have third and fourth grade ELA testing the week that we come back from spring break. We are the first to kick it off. And we just encourage parents to try to refrain from making appointments in the month of April for their kiddos, try to keep those after school. Just a few little reminders. April 1st is the last evening of Growing God's Way. And April 8th was the original date, but with our two-hour early dismissal for the solar eclipse. That's why Growing God's Way was moved back to April 1st.
That's it for the elementary.
Hopefully, we are keeping them short.
Yeah, so I'm going to start with a couple incentives. Our fifth and sixth grade students that met certain criteria for the third quarter were able to participate in a couple incentives. Our fifth graders did a really cool video-led art painting, and they all really enjoyed this. And that was neat to see. And our sixth grade students all brought in different board games. Couple really old-looking board games, and they popped popcorn and played board games and ate popcorn all afternoon. So they had a lot of fun doing that. Our seventh and eighth grade students, this Friday, the eligible ones for the third quarter are going to the Roller Skate Center in West Unity, Ohio. They're going to skate, play some games, and have snacks. I want to say a big thank you to the Hicksville Foundation for sponsoring this incentive. And just to all our fifth through eighth grade teachers for organizing these incentives and really rewarding our, you know, fifth through eighth graders who had a great third quarter. The next thing is our middle school track season is about to begin. Our first meet is on April 4th. And then we'll have quite a few meets through the months of April and May. We've begun the scheduling process for the 2024-2025 school year. Students have chosen certain electives that they're interested in, and now we're in the process of crafting the individual student schedules. As you know, five through eight, we're all on a bell schedule now, so they go to their different periods. And they have certain ones that they can choose outside of their core classes. So we're starting to schedule those now, and that's going well. Like Mrs. Kaufman mentioned, and Mr. Hoffman, state testing's coming up. Fifth and eighth graders have three tested areas: English Language Arts, Math, and Science. Sixth and seventh graders have English Language Arts and Math. Like Mrs. Kaufman said, being here is very important here over the next month. This is our final preparation the next few weeks, getting ready for those state assessments. And then mid-April, early April, we'll start taking those state assessments. So really important to be here, get rest, eat well at night, and do all those things that we certainly highlight. Be on the lookout for a letter going home with students that detail the different grade levels and what state tests they'll take on certain days. So be on the lookout for that, parents. But we're really proud of our students and our teachers for all the work they've done this year, the preparations. We're excited to see how they do on these state tests this year. And then the last thing, I just want to say a big thank you to Bronson Graber. He put together, and if you haven't seen it yet, go on our Facebook page, he put together a Together for Vedder video showing our support for Kirsten Vedder. And certainly, we all love her and are supporting her and are here for her, and we want her to know that and everybody in the community to know that. But that video that Bronson put together, it was awesome. And I know she really enjoyed that. So I just wanted to say thank you to Bronson. That's all I have.
Eric?
Yeah, continuing with the busy time of year in high school, our seniors take off for New York City on Wednesday morning very early. And then they will be flying back late Friday night. So we're looking forward to that opportunity for our senior class this year. The Spring Innovative Interview semifinals are this Wednesday at PFW. The top eight-place finishers from the second semester class are competing to see who will join the top finishers from the fall semifinals that were held previously this year. And then that competition, the finals, will take place on April 5th at Defiance College. So good luck to those students. Our state testing in the high school begins on Wednesday, April 10th. The first test that we are holding for high school students is ELA 2. That'll be on April 10th. That's for the sophomores. All grade levels in high school are testing except juniors. Juniors already done with their test, the ACT, so they're the lucky ones this year. But freshmen, we have Algebra I. And sophomores, we have Geometry, Biology, and American History. And then seniors will take Government. So lots of tests going on. Spring sports are also currently underway with the first contest starting very soon. Varsity Baseball will play host to Crestview on March 28th at 5:00 p.m. Varsity Softball kicks off their season on March 25th at 5:00 p.m. when they host North Central at home. And then our first track meet of the season will be on April 2nd at 5:00 p.m. when we host Wayne Trace Striker and Hilltop here at home. Our high school student council had a successful student blood drive last week. They were able to collect 24 units of blood, which was actually the goal that the Red Cross had set for our blood drive. So thank you to all the students, staff, community members who came out and donated blood last week. And I'd also like to give a huge shout-out to all of our students who participated in the school musical Les Mis earlier this month, along with the directors. They put on another great performance, and they should all be very proud of their great talent. I was blown away by it, and I know just about everybody in attendance was too. And then our seniors did an awesome job at the annual senior coronation and gave the community a great evening of entertainment on March 9th, so they should also be proud of their efforts. So great to see our students out there onstage, and they truly do a remarkable job. I'm always blown away by just how talented they are and how much comfort they have up onstage. So, great job.
Thank you very much.
Nothing new. There's a meeting this coming Thursday at 5:30.
Mr. Countryman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that our admin team, sitting over there, and myself, we started a new interview process here when we interview for any employee that we're hiring for. And the team is all the administrators. So even if it's an elementary position, the rest of the admin team is in there when we do those interviews. So it's a great focus that we've got going. And along with that, then, we've been attending some job fairs. You may have noticed, Erin, did you still have that setting up down there by the front door?
Yep.
If you came in the front door, there's a, I don't know what you call it, but a sign that you pull up that we'll take with us when we go to those job fairs to advertise the school. We went to one at, up here a few weeks ago, and it was really beneficial because it gets our name out there, and then we get to interview several kids and collect those resumes then. And even if you don't have an opening at that time, you never know when something could happen. And our objective, obviously, is to get the best that we can get here. So tomorrow, I'll be going to one in Bowling Green. And then Thursday, Wednesday, Toledo. And I think then we're done till... Is there one in Findlay in April, maybe?
Oh, in U.
Okay, yeah. So those have been real beneficial for us. I wanted to say thanks to the Chamber for hosting the Chamber Lunch and for Erin inviting me to go. It was nice. And a great message from... What was her name? Can't think of it, from the Economic Development Office. Very good message. And then I also have, I think I've mentioned this before, Tyler may not know it, but I serve on the Huber Board as the representative for the school. So we have every other month meeting there, and I attended that. That was good. We reviewed our strategic plan, talked about some of the accomplishments, like the mortgages paid off, which is a good thing, and some repairs within the building. And then I also, as well as the administrators, or Erin and Tony, attended the middle school, high school band and choir concert. Kirsten's turn is Thursday. And I'm a music guy, you know that. And I'm not kidding. I think that that was the best middle school, high school band and choir concert that I've been to. They sounded awesome. They really did. And even though the high school band was small in numbers, they were just spot-on with their musicality. And then, of course, in the middle school, there was a lot of kiddos. So, yeah, it was just good to see all those kids there and that. And then Mrs. Wendell with the choir, and Mr. Colmire with the choir, just a great job all around. It was really nice. Last Saturday, the PTO had their annual fundraiser, and that was a lot of fun. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is you have to drive through the park, because I'm not going to name any names because I don't want to leave anybody out. But they installed a scoreboard at the softball field and a flagpole. Impressive. So really nice to everyone. A big thank you to everyone that was involved in making that happen. I know John was instrumental with that, I can say that. But there were a lot more people involved with that besides John Adams. And thank you to all the people that did that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Just a question on that. So is that on our property?
No, that is not.
Okay. No, that's Defiance Metrom.
Yeah.
Throw it out and take a guess.
That I do know. That is not.
No. The girls softball diamond, and in that parking area, there is Defiance Metrom.
But, you know, we've had that conversation many times, too. We all work so collectively down there and share so many different areas that that's what's great about this community, is the sharing and collaboration they have with everything, so.
Moving on to Minutes and Financials, I need a motion in a second, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Eric, thank you, Gayle. All right.
Minutes from the regular board meeting on February 26, 2024. The Treasurer's Consent Agenda Items, Cash Reconciliation as of February 29, 2024, Financial Statements for February 2024, To Approve Amended Official Certificate of Estimated Resources for Fiscal Year 2024 as Presented, Total Grand Fund Resources of $16,701,309.71, and Total Resources for All Funds of $21,550,601.84. Approve Fiscal Year 2024 Permanent Appropriations as Presented, Total General Fund Appropriations of $14,473,460.05, and Total Appropriations for All Funds of $17,363,736.56. To Approve the Transfer of Interest Income Earned for the Period of January 2022 through February of 2024, Using Each Month's Monthly Ending Star Ohio Interest Rate from the General Fund to the Interest Local Funded Initiatives Fund, Fund 004-900E, in the Amount of $23,726.22 per the Attached Spreadsheet. To Approve the Transfer of Interest Income Earned for the Period of January 2022 through February 2024, Using each Month's Monthly Ending Star Ohio Interest Rate from the General Fund to the Local Fund Building Project Fund, Fund 004-900L, in the Amount of $30,438.93 as per Attached Spreadsheet. To Accept the Following Donations, $100 from H&amp;W Automotive for Track, and $250 from Crawl Insurance Services LLC for the Middle School Student of the Quarter Lunch. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to add, we discussed items three and four there, the interest transfer last month. Obviously, I presented to you a spreadsheet that shows how it was calculated starting from January of 2022, when interest rates were 10 basis points, and has escalated pretty much throughout the last two-plus years. Also want to state that, you know, these two funds that we've talked about here were set up for replacing carpeting and HVAC equipment in this building. Obviously, there's a certain lifespan on all that stuff, and it will need to be replaced. So, and with inflation so forth, thought it was time to make sure that we continue to fund those funds, so that when that day comes, we need to upgrade those items. Hopefully, we have the funds sitting there available and don't have to go to other means to take care of those updates. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mike. We need our roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. The Employment of Certified Staff. I need a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you. To Recommend to Approve Madison Sebenauer as a Certified Substitute for the 2023-2024 School Year. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. The Employment of Classified Staff, and then after this, we'll go to our addendum. I need a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you. Recommend to Approve the Following as Classified Substitutes for the 2023-2024 School Year, Austin Rinallet and Madison Sebenauer. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0, and we'll move on to that addendum. Employment of Classified Staff. I need a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Recommend to Approve the Following Supplemental Contracts for the 2023-2024 School Year, Michael Myers for Junior High Boys Track Coach, and Madison Sebenauer as Assistant Track Coach. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Services and Agreements. A motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Gayle. Recommend to Approve a Service Agreement with Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center per Ohio Revised Code 3313.845. This agreement will begin July 1st, 2024, and shall terminate on June 30th, 2025. The total projected cost is $875,150.91. Okay, and that's our tip. I mean, we have to do it every year, and it increases every year, everything else is. So, discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to other business.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Recommend to Approve Resolution Number 2024-06, Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levis and Certifying Them to the County Auditor. To Recommend to Extend Recognition and Congratulations to Elaine Gurkin, Jen Bergman, and a Host of Volunteers, the Cast and Crew of Les Miserables, for Their Outstanding Performances on March 1st to March 3rd. Merci. All right. Comments? I've been listening to Eric sing those songs since the summer, so it's... It was a good thing.
It was very good.
It was. They were all ready, and the voices. It's nice. Typically, we have a lot more female voices, but it's nice to be able to have strong male voices in the choir, and we definitely had that this year. So, roll call.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0, and we'll move on to our addendum for other business. And I need a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Recommend to Approve Requisition to Farnham Equipment Company in the Amount of $28,975 for the Spirit Shop. Discussion?
Yes. Well, we've been spending, golly, nads, several months talking about this and trying to lay out the plan for it, and how the kids would benefit from it, how the parents, the community would benefit. And, you know, I know that Angie and Erin have been instrumental at getting this rolling. And, you know, the benefits, I can say that the benefits towards the House Initiative and the Hicksville Initiative, this feeds right into that, and the high expectations and stuff that we have for the kids and the community. It'd be located right over here by Mr. Hott's office. But there's all kinds of items that we're researching with Mr. Welch that'll focus on the houses. So it's not going to interfere with the sports end of things. It's going to be geared towards the House Initiative. And some other comments? You guys want to chime in on anything?
I mean, have you guys thought of using it as like a workshop, like a business workshop for kids to get...
Yeah, exactly. I think Mrs...
Make a business plan and...
Yeah, so we have a couple of different things that we've kind of thought would be very beneficial to our students. One is, you know, we have our cross-categorical students that can go in and, you know, learn some job skills, greeting, you know, customers, folding, bagging, just any kind of way they can be involved there. Like, that, I think, is wonderful. Restocking. Then, like you said, we have students that are seniors or that might want to get into marketing, or even into retail, utilizing them in that spirit store, teaching them how to go about inventory, or, you know, checking stocking. Another thing that, like Mr. Countryman said, we're looking at doing a lot with our houses. We're always looking for ways to boost and get the kids excited with our house initiative. So that's something that we see big time in that spirit store. It's not going to hurt our sports teams at all. They're still going to make their money because none of these, none of the apparel will have any sports on it. It's going to be more than, we want it to be more than just clothing. We're looking at different items, but it's going to be mostly apparel, mostly clothing.
Will it be house-specific, or will it be overall?
It'll be all of that. All four houses will be represented in some way, but then also the aces as well, because, yeah, the houses collectively make the aces. But it won't, nothing will say Aces Football Team or anything like that.
There's certain things that are missing within our athletics. Some of that, some of those things would be, you know, toddlers, baby apparel, on top of the apparel that just has the aces and nothing else on it. If you're looking at some of our younger students, we want to have a range of prices. So from t-shirts to sweatshirts to very nice apparel, too. And then, like, the students, something the students can afford.
Sure.
All the way up to, if a parent wants to spend a little extra money and get their kid something extra nice. So.
So speaking of that, are you, is there, what, how is it going to work with being available to parents?
Well, great question. We want to make sure, like, if there's a basketball game going on, or tonight would have been a great night to have it open. Anytime where we have a good crowd coming in, we'd like to have it open. It's not going to be open all day for school. We don't want that. But maybe a couple of days before school, maybe a little after school. But any athletic events, we'd like to have it open for...
Maybe during the day, one day, like, during November, December, Christmas time.
Yeah.
We talked about that.
So I'll chime in, too, and throw in there, not that we're trying to get in the retail business or anything, but when this started out as a conversation amongst the admin team, it truly was about school pride and school spirit first and foremost. And then we quickly learned that we could use it as an educational experience for our students. So just to kind of throw that out there, like, yeah, it'll make some money and, you know, hopefully eventually pay back the investment. But not trying to just jump into the retail business by any means. It's really what we feel is good for the school, good for the community. There's not a business in town that's open, just a shop, you know, like this anymore. And BSN has experience working with schools and spirit shops, and Angie got that contact rolling. And then we've met with them once in person, and then a lot of email communication going on back and forth. So we're confident that they'll help us get on the right track, too, with what we need in keeping it sustainable. So.
And we also want our kids to be very excited in the school spirit and culture. We want them to just buy into Hicksville completely, all the way from our sports to just going out and being proud to wear their Hicksville clothes.
Are we also, like, thinking, like, small items? Like, I think of the book fair when the little stuff up by the counter, you know, that little stuff?
Petals and trinkets.
Yeah.
Little things that, anything that says, like, aces or Hicksville, we're looking at all sorts of different fun things like that, too. And parents, parents always, even koozies or, like, the new cups they have out, or coffee cups, anything like that, something that people will want to have.
Well, I'm even thinking crossover with your art, having stickers made, having contests, like we used to do with the flag. I don't know if that's still a thing.
It's good.
But have, you know, the kids' ability to compete for a sticker that they then sell.
Yeah, you could have a whole graphic design.
Right, right. I mean, turning this into entrepreneurial, using your skills, I think, is a great, great thing. Good investment.
It's exciting. It would be exciting for all of our students, too. I mean, not all of our students are able to go to stores and have access to different things. So having that right here, where all students can be a part of that, I think would be really special to get everybody involved with that, too.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be neat.
And I think, in no little part, it may take away from that, oh, the athletes get everything, you know? It's everybody.
So who's actually in charge of, like, day-to-day to make sure it's unlocked, and employee, you know, the students are supposed to work at 8:00, and make sure the student's actually there?
We have a couple of ideas for that. I think we have some good concrete ways to make that work. We're still in the process of getting that hunkered down to exactly what we want. But I think with all the ideas we have for that, we will have plenty of help for that room. Now, as far as unlocking it, I think it would be an administrator or making sure things are kind of put together. Now, as far as unlocking it, I think it would be an administrator or making sure things are, are kind of put together.
So how does it work financially? Do we like to start up when we're talking about where you're saving?
Well, take it out of the PI money is, would be my recommendation. And then as we grow, then we would pull that money back and put it back in there. It's not going to happen in a year or two. You know, you're not looking at a hundred thousand dollar sales a year, I wouldn't think. But, you know, I think that would be another piece that, that, you know, especially older kids would be able to contract that as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great that you can say this is your investment. When, you know, calculate your ROI, calculate a break-even point, calculate, you know, I mean, that would be good.
Right.
A good workshop for, for kids, given the numbers.
I mean, I don't know.
Mr. Methman, I think I could put you on our committee, too.
I'll start.
Mike's the, the financial expert. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I look at things differently, because I'm not the money guy. But permanent improvement, general fund, this fund, that fund, it's all Hicksville's money. So.
I guess I was asking more, just because, you know, I know that, like, the Ohio Revised Code, it's public money, you can't just, you know, spend it on anything and, like, how that works.
I do want to, to mention, there, there is a kickback that we'll receive. So the total sales, there's different percentages based off of your total sales that your kickback is. So on top of our sales and whatever we gross off that, then we will get this kickback every year. And we're hoping that we can reuse that kickback that we get and even be able to disperse it amongst some of our athletics. And then, because they'll earn some of that through Welch themselves, too. And then use that money to buy even more inventory, and then that's free inventory for us, and then that goes back into the school as well.
Yeah, that reinvestment piece is, would be cool to show students as well. I like it.
Cool.
Let you get your answer. Question, it's your.
All right. Any other discussion?
I did have a question regarding that. Would it be maybe an idea to even get, like, the work release students involved with that to Mr. Blue's class? I know we've done a couple of entrepreneur projects ourselves, such as the Christmas tree sale. We're doing birdhouses right now. Maybe like if a student wants to do the work release, but necessarily doesn't have a car to drive to work, maybe their work release could be, you know, at 11:30, they just go work at the spirit shop.
Yeah, so Chris, that's a good question. That's kind of what Mrs. Smith was alluding to with her different options for students to work there. So the work release program that we have as a part of our ag program, our CTE program, so much of it is individualized and unique to each student as it is, as students are doing all different types of jobs. This could be one. You know, we want it to, to be appropriate for the kids that are, whatever path they're going on. I will say, too, like, we thought about that. We don't want it to compete with things that you guys are currently selling. So maybe they kind of coexist, I don't know. Maybe they do get sold in there. But because, yeah, that's a good point. There are things being sold by our students now as a part of a different program. So maybe they could, you know, coexist. Or not exactly sure what that'll look like yet, but it's definitely a possibility that one of those students could, you know, be placed there, and that could be their fit for their work experience, so.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. I need another motion.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd. Recommend to Approve Requisition to Steinberry Uniforms LLC In the Amount of $27,912.51 For Band Uniforms. Yay, new uniforms. Good deal. Discussion. No, it is a good deal. There's only one generation of band uniforms between my years in band here, so many years ago. Indeed.
I just love the air.
Have you guys seen a picture of them or, or anything?
Haven't.
If you have a chance, like, they're pretty cool. Zach Colmeyer has one, I think he's still got it. I know it has to be sent back at some point. It's very cool. You should stop down and see it if you have a chance.
Nice, that'll be fun.
They'll look pretty sharp.
We did talk about that, but it's, the uniforms that we have, I think we've had them for at least 13 years, at least, because then we didn't get them while I was here.
They were used when we got them.
And they were used by 11 years or eight years when we bought them, so.
It was in my first year, my first year or two of being on the board the first time.
So the uniforms are older than the children wearing them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
For sure.
Not saying a lot.
And I don't know, Mike, does this reflect the 3% discount?
No, it doesn't. What, paying upon getting them, when the invoice is due, we get a 3% discount. So that'll knock it down to about $26,500. So another about $1,400-plus savings by paying it off instantly. So that'll help, too. And we're set up that the band fund, through a lot of work that Mr. Colmeyer has done over the years, will be putting a little over $12,000 towards that. And then the district will pick up the remaining balance of those uniforms.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Any old business to discuss?
We finally had a bunch of rain.
Yes, and?
I went through there two or three times. Two or three times that day. Never a problem. So, you know, it's weird how we almost spent, what, $140,000 to fix that, and we didn't have to do it. So, but I think we're in the clear, because we had a lot of rain. So any other time that would have happened, we'd have been swimming down there. So it was great, exciting.
Any other discussion, anything?
I wanted to, I thought of this. I noticed the county commissioners had one of their meetings here in Mr. Blue's class, the government. I know we've talked about it in the past. I would love to entertain the idea again about us having a board meeting during the school day, possibly.
So that the students can kind of see how it goes and what happens and?
And even maybe, I mean, we've talked in the past about having some of the different programs doing a presentation for us would be neat.
Yeah. And even as simple as understanding the rules of order, such as they are, they've changed a bit.
It's a great idea.
I'll say, as a former government teacher, I love that idea. I think that'd be great. And I know Mr. Blue, I think I speak on his behalf. He was a big fan of the commissioners coming, so I think he'd help make that work, too. It's local government in action, so it's a good idea. I can tell you what he's going to do.
We do not have any unannounced guests. We have no guests. We are going to go into executive session for the purpose to consider the appointment, specifically compensation and appointment, employment of a public employee or official. And there will be nothing voted on during this meeting. So you guys will be excused as soon as we adjourn our regular meeting and go into this one. All right. Do we need a break, or are we going to plug through?
Roll call.
Yes, roll call, please.
Well, we'll need, need a motion.
We need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
All right. And roll call.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We will go in at 6:10. We'll just take a brief break. Oh, yeah, I got to get that out, don't we? All right. Six.
About five minutes.
All right, 6:14. Okay.